Order, the clerk will please call the roll.
Mayor Carlet.
Here.
Vice Mayor Finn.
Here.
Councilmember Patanna.
Here.
Councilmember Bittensbacher.
Here.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
And Councilmember Leonie.
Here.
Good evening and welcome to the City Council Special Meeting of June 19th, 2018. We have one item on our study session agenda tonight, and it is recalibration of development standards. I'll turn it over to City Manager Jeff Tine to begin our meeting.
Great, thank you, Mayor and Council. Appreciate the opportunity to be with you today and hope you enjoyed that title that we have there for this tonight. But really, I think that's exactly, actually, as Chris will go through, is really a great conversation that we are looking forward to. Really, this comes from conversations that we had with the City Council, again, in your retreat back in November about discussions on the built-in natural environment and as we plan for the growth of the city, both with redevelopment and development throughout, really, what are the various planning standards, land use practices and procedures that we have, design review standards that come in play as we are preparing to continue our growth and development. And with that, the Planning Community Development Department has done an incredible amount of work in just really reviewing all of their different practices and really wanted to share with you a little bit about some of the discussion on their work plan for the next couple of years. And so with that, I'll pass it over to our Planning and Community Development Director, Chris Hawkes.
Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you for that introduction, Jeff, and good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the time this evening. As I really think this study session tonight is a continuation of the study session that Scott White led back in February where he talked about 15 of the key sites in and around the city, and I was part of that presentation. I think we ran out of time a little bit towards the end. But, you know, when we put this presentation together, I didn't know what to call it. Recalibration sounds so bureaucratic and mechanical, but I think it's probably the right term in that we're trying to adjust our standards. I mean, I think as we look at development as a community matures, you know, we want to see different things happen. We want to see more distinctive development. We want to see development that's more focused on destinations and experience. And all those things require that we continually look at our standards and see where we can make adjustments to it. And so what I'm going to do tonight is run through seven key work plan tasks that the Planning Department has identified over the next one to two years and beyond that deal with adjustments we could make to our general plan, things we'd like to do in our zoning code, and then finally with our design review principles. Now, in this presentation today, we don't have all the answers today. That's what we're going to be seeking out and finding. And also, the tasks that I'm going to be identifying today certainly shouldn't be seen as a panacea because it's not the complete and total answer. There's certainly, we have partners when we look at development, all the other departments that we work with in the development realm. Also, there's a number of other companion efforts that are going on alongside this in the city, and I'll point out a couple of them. The Engineering Department, Dean Alon and the group, is leading an effort to comprehensively look at their infrastructure guidelines. That's all the guidelines that, all the details that we have for grading and drainage, street sections, all those things also affect development and form. So that's a process that's going on right now, and we're part of that as well. So that's one thing going on. And then the other thing is the, an effort that the Economic Development Department is leading, and that is a strategy that they're looking at for specialty restaurants, retail, and entertainment attraction, because I think it's really important that we can adjust our standards, but at the end of the day, we have to respond to development requests that come in from the private sector. And we can guide that development request, but what we can't do is dictate or, you know, that we like Restaurant A or Restaurant B, right? So we have to deal with what comes in and treat those developments and the classes of land use that they propose, rather than the brand of the land use. So those are things that are all companion and important as we look at development activity over the next few years. So the purpose of this study session really is a realization that things have changed. Just think about 10, 15 years ago. Think about your buying habits, right? You know, we used to go to malls, we used to go to stores for everything. That's not happening so much, not even with me, right? I'm buying a lot more stuff online, online retailers. You know, the whole Amazon experience, I think, has changed retailing across the board. And so there's less bricks and mortar, and when we do get out, we get off to go to special places, right? We want to go to places that are fun to go to, that are engaging, that have activated spaces, that are different. And that all is where we focus on experience and how can we go to these areas with spaces that we can create more memorable spaces, memorable places with. So I think all that has created, I think, a heightened and renewed response on some of those things. And so we saw this as an opportunity within our department to look at all our standards and where can we make policy and code adjustments to align with new priorities and new expectations, not only the council but the community as well. So when we do that, we're gonna, we're looking, we're most definitely going to have to work with the development community. Some of the things we're proposing are going to require a lot of back and forth, a lot of discussion with development, because it's going to have some measurable change, I think. And then also, just as we all know, we work within a legal framework. We don't have, we do have limitations on how far we can go, and we can certainly guide development, but ultimately, at the end of the day, we do have legal responsibilities that we have to work within, so. Okay, so I thought before I jump into some of the tasks, just to remind everyone what the development process looks like. It's layered, it can be complicated from the outside in. But starting at the highest level, which is the general plan, again, that's the foundation for the city, that's aspirational. Where does the city want to go in the future? Looks out 10 to 20 years and beyond, and it really is the foundational look that we have for how we want to grow in the future. When you get into the zoning, the zoning ordinance, or when you look at rezones, we're really looking at how do we implement the general plan and how, and zoning then gets to the next tier whereby you have a legal description that is attached to land, and within a zoning category, it tells us everything in terms of the standards. You know, what are the building setbacks? How high can a building go? What are the parking requirements? And all those things that affect how that development is going to, the things that they have to abide by. And then the next level is site plan review. We talked a little bit about this at the last council meeting, but that's the next layer where we're looking at a specific development concept, and we look at it to make sure it complies with our zoning code before the developer moves on for, to develop, you know, expensive construction plans. We want to make sure the concept works first. So how does a general plan and zoning tie in? The general plan, if we look at it, again, it's more aspirational, it's more what we want to have. We identify at a high level, fit form and character. What does that mean? That means we look at what are the desired land uses that we want to see throughout the city? When we look at each land use category, we key on density, how many units, based on a unit of geography, what's the intensity of that development? We'll look at the form of that development. We'll talk more about that today, how it's laid out, what is the character of it, how does it, how is it orient itself to surrounding properties? So the compatibility or fit is important, and that's what we look at at the general plan level. Zoning, again, is regulatory, and as I mentioned, standards that are fixed to specific properties. We look at things, what's allowed on site, what are your development standards? And as we see a rezone, by law, we have to make a finding that the rezone conforms to the general plan, or the applicant has to demonstrate that the change is warranted. We go through an analysis on that, and we'll have, we'll have one of those tonight. In terms of the general plan update, we've talked about what that is. Again, it's the policy and development framework. It's a live and document. There are, it is subject to some refinement. We want to keep it relevant and living. It is different in that we have to have it approved by voters at least every 10 years, and this is something that's still unique within the state of Arizona. I think we're the only state in the country that requires general plans to go to a ballot. But I'm going to talk about three work plan items tonight relative to the general plan update. The first one is we're going to look at modifying our land use categories. I'll talk about what those are and what we're thinking about. We'll also talk about redesigning property with these new categories, and then also updating general plan policies with respect to development. So starting with the first one, on the right is a graphic of the general plan land use map. You know, every color signifies a land use. For example, yellow is single-family residential, green, open space, purple, business park, industrial, and so forth. So every color means something, and it's a uniform color scheme that all municipalities use throughout the country. So we have about 22 land use categories as part of our general plan now. So some examples you've probably seen in past presentations, state density residential, two to five units per acre, community commercials, another category. Each of the category has a description in the general plan, and that description identifies what are the desired land uses? What does it see as the density that is, a density range for that, which might accommodate a variety of lot sizes? It talks about the character and, in some cases, development form. This is an area that we'd like to spend more time and more precision on as we go forward. As I mentioned, zoning has to conform to the land use category. So here are the opportunities here. I think in many respects, when we look at our land use categories, if we're looking to have distinction and difference within the different categories, then I think there's opportunities for us to rewrite those categories to align with maybe some of the expectations we have, so that when I have a rezone that comes in, I can say, okay, is it, there's some, there's some precision as to whether it complies with the general plan or not, whereas now, there's a lot of discretion, and sometimes it's probably a little too general. So I think we're looking to make these categories more descriptive and more, and more intentional, and really point to the desired character and form. So I'm going to show you an example of how that might work. So these are the, there's a legend of the 22 categories we currently have, but here's an example. This is one of the sites that Scott White showed you as a development site back in February. This happens to be northeast corner of Deer Valley and Lake Pleasant Parkway, 20-acre site here. And in their analysis, they identified a number of uses that they thought would be appropriate for the site, and they included specialty retail, medical office, professional office, or restaurants. I don't know that we talked about a development form in that meeting, but those were the, those were the range of land uses we have there. So when we look at the site specifically, today, on the general plan, it's designated community commercial, and on the zoning category, it's zoned general agricultural. So if somebody wanted to come in and actually develop a commercial development, they would have to rezone the property. When we look at the rezone, we have to make a finding that it complies with the land use category. In this case, it's community commercial. So when I look at community commercial, all those land uses that Scott's group pointed out, they certainly are appropriate for that category. That category, however, does allow for large-scale buildings, it allows for big box, big boxes are permitted, it allows for, you know, shopping centers. It basically says that that category, we really ought to be along arterials. So it, there really is a lot of discretion as to what that form looks like. So if we want to come in and we want to be more intentional as to what, the form in which that development happens, you know, that's where the description will come in. So if you look at this picture on your right, this happens to be an area near Desert Ridge. I can tell you, when you look at this area, it certainly has all those uses that we're talking about that we desire, right? It has the office, it has the restaurants, and all those things are part of it. But look at the form, it's more of a campus format, larger parking fields, and this isn't necessarily, you know, there are places in the city for this type of development, but maybe that's not the form for that property that we desire. Maybe what we desire is something like this, something that's more low-lying, low-level, Main Street-oriented, buildings that frame the street, buildings that don't go over a couple stories in height. We want to be more descriptive about the form. So what I'm suggesting as part of this task is that we look at rewriting our land use descriptions to have a little more distinction. So if we want that type of development and that we write a description that really better describes that, so that when we place it on properties, it's more clear as to what our expectations, expectations are, rather. So the second task is, once we've updated all those land use categories, then the big job is to, we have to update the general plan land use map, right? We have to then place all those categories on, on the general plan in different areas. So if we desire for a Main Street experience, commercial in certain areas, we have to identify where we think that's appropriate, so that when we get a rezone that comes in, it's very clear what they have to do there and so forth. We happen to have 22 categories right now. I tend to think that's probably too many. We probably need to either reduce them, but also, there needs to be more distinction and more difference between all the categories. So I think that's something we're suggesting. I think another area, I've keyed on commercial today, I think another area we probably need to look at in those land use categories is, you know, sometimes we tend to spend a lot of our time on lot size discussions, right? So let's have, let's have a better description as to if we have a category called a state residential, what does that mean? What are the, what are the lot sizes we're talking about really there? So we quit having a lot of these discussions about, you know, is it 6,000 square feet or 8,000 square feet? But let's just have a better understanding of what that range in lot sizes that's appropriate for that designation. So that's another area I think we're going to want to address there.
So, Chris, if I might interrupt you there. So how would you change that conversation? How would you actually write the text that changes that, so we're not talking about 6,000 or 8,000, but we're talking about more of the experience or the feel of the community?
Mayor Carlet, members of council, that's a great question. So I think it has to do with the, with better descriptions, and I think it has to do with the policies that relate to that description. So I think, right now, it's a little, there's some ambiguity as to the types of lot sizes that might fall within a designation. Maybe we want to be more intentional about that, maybe we want to be more, and certainly when we look at placing these designations across the city, maybe there's an area where we want larger lots, and so we want to better define where those areas are. So that's what I'm suggesting, just a, you know, an adjustment to our standards, more specificity than perhaps we have today.
Okay, and you talked about big box, and I know that we've talked in the past about maybe just changing the size of what we consider a big box, which is 100,000 square feet right now, so maybe change just that amount. So we still have big box there, but allowed there, but it's a different big box than we've been used to all this time.
Mayor Carlet, you're one slide ahead of me. I'm about ready to get to that specific question.
Okay. Sorry.
No, that's great. Okay. Any other questions about the general plan before I head on to the zoning code? That one? All right, and then, I'm sorry, one more slide before I get to the big box. And then the other thing, of course, is our general plan policies. So a lot of times, we just key on the land use designations and the land use map. Reality is, there's 24 elements in our general plan, there's a number of policies that relate to all the areas. You can see on the screen some of the categories, everything from housing to water resources, so it really addresses all realms of development, if you will, going forward. So, you know, we update the categories, of course, we need to update the, and strengthen the policies so that we're more clear as to the type of development we want to see. So that, that should make sense. There are other policies that we think deserve some specific look as we move forward to. How do we address growth? There might be some interest in, and maybe growth occurs more organically, and maybe it's tiered, rather than having, you know, new areas that pop up that are perhaps miles from existing infrastructure. I think we might want to address the pace of growth and ensure it's more organic. I'm not talking about urban growth boundaries, because we can't do that in Arizona, but something that's just a little more organic and a little more measured than, than perhaps any developer coming in and putting a development outside the infrastructure limits if they're willing to pay for it, but something a little more measured. Again, the second bullet point is tying lot size and land use designation, just a closer look. Another thing I think I've heard from some of you on the council is, maybe we need to look at specific areas for characterier plans or corridor plans. You know, perhaps we desire, you know, pick a roadway, maybe it's Happy Valley. We desire it to be more of a desert roadway, and we want larger setbacks. We can identify corridor area plans or specific, you know, specific policies that would guide that segment.
When you talk about tiered growth, are you talking about zones, different zones in our city?
I'm suggesting that, that maybe we have policies that enable us to, you know, maybe if a development happens to be a certain distance outside of where current infrastructure is, maybe it provides us some tools to, maybe we don't, maybe we're not ready to support that development yet because of it's so far outside the infrastructure limit. But it's something we want to explore.
It seems to me that a long time ago, we were able to have those zones, and those zones were tied to the cost of impact fees. Do we still have that option?
Well, we still have, sure, we still have an impact fee model, an impact fee plan that are tied to specific projects, but we have some outlying areas that, you know, might be a little, might be a little early to consider that development, because once, if the developer wants to put that infrastructure in, the city then has to come back and maintain those roadways and then provide services out that area. Maybe we want to be a little measured in how we approach that. So this could be some policy language that enables us to, you know, address whether we want to support a project or not, given its location and proximity to infrastructure.
Mayor and council, also, just a real quick item, I think that's exactly right, Mayor, is in the past, kind of one natural way that we were able to use is, when we looked at our impact fees, there was different burdens in different areas, and it kind of served that purpose. The concern going forward is it doesn't necessarily always align because of the need in impact fees to have a defined service area, and so sometimes that defined service area may not link with how we can serve that area or infrastructure, or other kinds of topographical issues and things. So the bottom line is, impact fee zones may not serve the same exact purpose that Chris is mentioning.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so let's talk about the zoning ordinance, some changes that we're looking at. Again, zoning is the development standards, and it's precise as to how we apply it. So a couple of work plan items I would like to talk to you about tonight is revisit the definition of large-scale retail. Really, all that means is big box ordinance, revisit that definition, and then update the zoning districts that we currently have as to where is large-scale retail permitted, and perhaps we want to update where other types of uses are allowed within the, within the land use matrix. So let's talk about the first one right now. The big box, big box ordinance, that was adopted by council back in 2005, and the definition is this, you are considered large-scale retail if you're a single establishment of 100,000 square feet or more, or if you're a building, perhaps you have multiple establishments, but you have a one primary entry, that's, that's still a big box. Or if you're a site that has multiple retail tenants, but in aggregate, you're over 500,000 square feet. So in those two instances, you would be called large-scale retail. So what does that mean if you're large-scale retail? That means that we require a conditional use permit, and currently, you can go into, we have a couple of commercial zoning districts that permits big box retail, and provided you're, if you're, if it's a big in sight and you're doing a PED, you have to be, doesn't get on the general plan today as community commercial or regional commercial. So those are the areas that would permit big box under that definition. Now, there is some sense that maybe we want to explore changing that definition. Now, what I can tell the council is that we're not under assault by big boxes, given this current definition. In fact, over the last 10, 12 years, I think we've only gotten one, what we call one big box, and that would be the Fries up on North Lake Pleasant at 127,000 square feet. So we haven't got a lot in the big boxes. However, there are medium-sized buildings, over 50,000 square feet perhaps, grocery stores, you know, other types of places that do have a big impact in the community. And so that's a question for us. Is that something we want to consider? We've certainly looked around at other communities, and 50,000 square feet seems to be a pretty common number, a delineator for when you become a big box storefront. So that is something we can look at. Obviously, once we, once we look at the definition, that's going, that's going to require a lot of, a lot of communication with the development community as to what that means and what that might look like in practice. I did want to provide the council with a little bit of perspective on what that feels like, because it's, it's a number. What does that mean? So if you look at the graphic on the left, these are the, and all these, I think all these brands are pretty familiar to you, but between 0 and 25,000 square feet, these are the types of stores that generally fit in that category, okay? The, you know, the Walgreens on the corner, the Trader Joe's, those are the smaller types of buildings. When you get to 25,000 to 50,000 square feet, you know, the medium-sized buildings, the Pet Smarts, the Barnes &amp; Noble, fall in that category. Now, when you reach 50,000 and you're within 50,000 and 100,000, you fall into, you know, the Harkins, the, some of the grocery stores, although some can be even larger, over 100,000. And then certainly, when you get over 100,000, you're talking about the big ones, the Targets, the Fries, I mean, the Costcos, the Lowes, those types of places. So just to give the council a little perspective of what that, what those numbers feel like. So if we want to go down to 50,000, you know, we're going to affect a lot more than we currently do.
So if we have one of these largest of the stores, say, go out of business and now it's empty, and we have initiated all of our new descriptions, does the, does that shopping center now have to adhere to our new policies, even though they were originally in the old policy?
Right. Mayor Carlet, members of the council, I believe, we'd have to look at that, but I believe since that development was already established and enabled to have a big box, it's, in a sense, grandfathered, so somebody else could come in and fill that space. I don't, I don't know that we can then close the door and say, okay, now you got to chop up this, this big space into several spaces. But that's something we can look at, though, as part of our big box ordinance.
We should look at that. Yeah, we should definitely look at that. Where's our attorney?
And then the other thing we want to look at with the zoning ordinance changes is, this is a snippet of a land use matrix out of our zoning ordinance. So it's a multi-page form, this happens to be all our commercial districts. At the top, you can see all the various commercial districts and industrial districts that we have. P means something's permitted, C means something is permitted with a conditional use permit, and if it has a dash, it's not permitted. So with regard to that, if, as we adjust our definition for large-scale retail, maybe we want to talk about where it's permitted in current districts. Today, it's allowed as a conditional use in C2 districts. But let's, let's think about what C2 is. That's the most common commercial district in the city. It's typically what you see at every mile location in Southern Peoria, they're almost all zoned C2. So we need to have that conversation about whether that's the appropriate fit for that, given what our definition might be. And then I would suggest, this land use matrix probably hasn't been updated comprehensively in a few years, and so I think there's a lot of land uses here that are either out of date, or maybe, maybe there's certain land uses that no longer, given our current priorities, should be in some of these districts, so we might want to adjust that. So.
So are you considering consolidating these or expanding them, or just changing the definitions of each of them?
Well, not to pick on any one, any one use here, so I'll just be generic about it, but let's say, let's say, use A, we no longer think's appropriate in PC2 and C2. So maybe we want to make adjustment to the land use matrix, and maybe it's not, maybe it shouldn't be permitted anymore. Maybe it's more appropriate in today's environment in different districts. So what I'm suggesting is that we, we completely update our land use matrix, and, and I can tell you, some of the land uses that we have in there, you'd laugh if you read them, and that they're no longer applicable today. We still have video rental places, we still have, you know, some of those types of uses that really don't relate to today's environment. So I'm just suggesting that we be more, probably more concise, but more directive as to where these land uses are appropriate in today's zoning districts.
Modernize.
Yep, exactly. All right, so let's talk about design review principles. So this is the other piece of the, every site plan, every preliminary plat that we have that comes into the city goes through design review. We have a design review manual, you see the copy of the cover on the right. It is very comprehensive. We have some good standards, but it's been in place for about 10 years, and I think it's probably time that we look at making some adjustments to it. Design review impacts everything, everything from architectural review of the building, the way the building looks, there's multiple categories we look at in terms of the building architecture. It also addresses site layout, and site layout includes everything from, you know, for larger sites, how do we, how do we announce arrival into the site, what are the buffers, all those types of things. Open space and amenity package is also part of designer view. SEPTAD means Crime Prevention Through Environmental Designs. We want, we want developments to be safe, and so where buildings are placed, where structures are placed, can impact the safety of that development. So we do have policies in SEPTAD. So this is just a, you know, a kind of a list of the things that we, it's very comprehensive, as I said, but we've had design review in place since 1998, we adjusted it in 2010, and it's, like I said, probably a time to do that again. In terms of single-family, we also look at everything from, you know, length of blocks to layout of subdivisions, to the amenity packages, connectivity among subdivisions, all those types of things as well. So it's really comprehensive and applies to every development project that comes through the city. So it's, today, it's a staff-driven review, but that's something I'd like to talk to you about. So there's two work plan items that I see. I'll talk to you about the new design review board that we're trying to stand up right now, and then, secondly, the really big task of updating our design review standards. And so I'll talk to you about that and maybe get some feedback of what you think might be some pinch points for us. So firstly, the design review board. So in the past, we had actually two design boards. We had what's called a design standards review board, which was a citizen board. They were tasked with helping us identify standards that we would imply to design review, and then we had a design review appeals board, which was more practitioners, and they would hear any appeal that we had. And quite frankly, this was a very unusual relationship, so we thought it made more sense to combine it into one design review board. Now, the new design review board that we've already effectuated in the code is comprised of seven members and an alternate. It still will have citizens, it will have three citizens, three general citizens, it will have some practitioners, so it will include an architect, a planner, an engineer, and a landscape architect. The alternate can be, can be a general citizen or any member of the public. So this group, basically, we would combine the responsibilities of both of the prior groups, so they would not only be a board that would help us identify and address new So they would not only be a board that would help us identify and address new standards, but they would be a board that would hear any appeals that we might get to, to design review things. In the past, we, quite frankly, rarely used our design review board. You know, they helped us, they helped us certainly with the 2008 manual, but the way we had design review, it's more of an administrative task. If the staff and the applicant came at, you know, Lagerjams, then something would go to the design review process. I'm, I'm, I'm proposing that maybe they have a, they take a greater role in our design review than perhaps they have in the past. I think there's a lot of larger developments or more impactful developments that it would be nice to get the perspective of citizens and practitioners early on the process. I think it also provides just a good third-party check on what the staff and the applicant are doing on, on that. So we would like to identify a stronger, broader role for them. Right now, we're in the process of, of trying to stand up that board. We've, we've already appointed several members of the board. I think it's, it's always hard to get some of those practitioners. So if you happen to know an architect or an engineer, I think we got the engineer. Happen to know an architect or a planner that you want to, that you want to send to the city clerk's office, we're still trying to fill those two positions. But I think once we stand at the board, we need to identify, you know, what will their role be in development? One thing that I think's important, though, when we look at design review is, whereas I want their, I want their, their input and their participation, we want to make sure that we don't strangle the process too. I mean, I think there's some named cities out there where design review can be pretty cumbersome and extend, you know, by months, a, a project. So I think we want to try to find that delicate balance of good participation, but not strangling the process. I think that's important here. And then the big thing, well, update the design principles. I would suggest that, given our discussions, that perhaps maybe non-residential might be the first one we want to, we want to talk about, single-family. I know there's been a lot of feedback I've heard on single-family. Maybe those are the first two that we talk about. What this shows on your left, these, these are the current chapters that we have in our design review manual. So you can see non-residential, single-family, multifamily, and then we have specific sections. We have a specific section that deals with Old Town. We have a specific section that, like Pleasant Parkway, and then the screening of utility cabinets. Again, there might be others areas of the city we, we think need specific design parameters that we want to talk about, or, you know, so I, I definitely think there's some room to identify those new areas or to strengthen our additional policies. So I guess I wanted to pause right here. I know I've, I've heard some comments from the council as to some of the concerns you have on design outcomes, but is there, are there things that you think we should be keen on as we move forward here? I mean, I've heard straight streets from you, Mayor, on residential, and I've heard...
Time or two. And setbacks.
Setbacks, certainly.
Council? Comments about the design as we know it now?
And I should mention, certainly this is not the only discussion. We intend to come back and, and show you what we're developing, and, and if you have input at those areas, that's, that's fine as well, but, and certainly in the days ahead, if there's things that you think of when you see a development case that you want to, you want to bring to my attention, certainly we'll, we'll, we'll keep track of that.
So do you, did you have a comment?
Are we talking strictly residential right now?
Mayor, members of the council, updating the design manual is going to be a big job. I'm suggesting that maybe, that maybe the higher priorities that we look at first, and this is up for debate, but maybe it's, it's the commercial areas, non-residential, and maybe it's single-family areas first. Just so, just so we're not waiting perhaps, you know, a, a good length of time to update the entire manual, maybe we're taking chapter to chapter at a time so we can get these new standards in place.
Okay.
Yes, Councilman?
Scott, all right, I'm sorry, Chris. So you're talking about this, so you're talking about the one to two-year process of getting this in, but we have a lot of development that's wanting to come in now, and a lot of these corners that we've identified as, as key commercial areas. Are we going to be applying some of the principles that we are looking at in this new design and kind of working with the developers to try to modify some of what they're bringing to us to fit what our, quote, new standards want to look like?
That's right, it was a great question. I, I think so. I mean, I think there's, we certainly, we, we talked to our, our developer clients about a lot of things, and sometimes things that are beyond our designer view manual. It's going to take some time to get some of these principles in place. We have good standards now, I just think they need to be improved. It's going to take some time to get some of these in place. If I can go to the next slide, this will kind of give you an indication, the, and if I can go through each of the work plan items, the land use categories, the more description, I think we can, we're looking at perhaps writing some as part of this year's cycle, and then finishing them as part of next year's general plan cycle, so the end of 2019. And then we have to designate, come out with our new land use map, and that would be next year, because that's going to be a big job to completely, you know, change the land use map of the general plan. So that's what I see the timetable for that part of it, policies same time. The large-scale retail, I'm suggesting that's something that we can get started on in this, this upcoming fiscal year. Start looking at the definition, start asking the questions about how we want to apply it, and then we need to talk to the development community about it. So it's probably going to take some time over the next year to really explore that fully. And then the zoning districts, I think that's something that we can also start looking at over the next, you know, the next fiscal year. I put 20 because I, I think it's probably going to take a year, and it's probably going to go into fiscal year 20 over the next year as well. So I, that's kind of the timetable there. I think we can start zoning code right away. We can certainly start the general plan stuff right away, but I think it's going to be next year before we have the major work items out of that.
My other question would be that, you know, as we're starting to talk to developers that are coming in, just making some of them aware of the potentials of some of these changes, even though they're not enacted, so that, you know, not everybody's wasting their time if they feel like they want to bring a project of this magnitude, but we know two years down the line, that's not what our standard is going to be.
Yeah, Councilman Edwards, members of the council, I can, I can tell you, in, in all these new developments we have, I mean, it's, we've had a lot of good discussion among the council about things that are of interest going forward, and what are our new priorities going forward. And we certainly in our, in our pre-application meetings or when we're talking about projects, we sit down and we make sure that they understand that, you know, it's, it's a different day. We're looking at different things, and, and there's a new perspective and a, and a greater prioritization on some of these things. So we try to have those conversations now, and hopefully tonight, you see some projects that, you know, that are good, decent projects that, that integrate some of those features.
So, Chris, I see that you, you've got 19 and 20 on everything. Is that, so is your plan to have all of this complete by the time the general plan goes before the voters?
Mayor Carlott, members of the, members of the council, so with the general plan, we, we're intending for that to go on the August 2020 ballot, right? But as I mentioned, we don't want to, we want to make sure that we get work product done and we, and we get it in the queue in, in terms of the, the annual process. We have a couple of things we're going to bring forward to the council this year as part of the annual process. The items of identifying there, those are bigger items that I'm suggesting we'll bring forward as part of the 2019 general plan process. So it'll hopefully be in place, that then we'll have a general plan we can then take to the ballot.
Okay, thanks.
So that's really the last slide I have, and if you have any further questions or any comments, be happy to take them.
I, I just have a comment.
Yes.
So thank you for all this information. This is a lot of work, and clearly that you've all been listening to us and listening to what we've been bringing forward from our constituents, and I really appreciate that. I love everything you're talking about here. I just, you're so, you know, diplomatic in your approach to all of this in that we should look at this and we may want to explore that, and I really think we just absolutely need to do it and look at all of it. And out with the old, in with the new. We do have good design standards, but I think in several different projects, since I've been on the council in the last three years, you know, we've had projects come forward where they meet our design standards, but, and so they're acceptable on paper, but looking to the future of Peoria and, you know, what we're growing into, not so much. And so I think we really need to elevate all of this to meet our vision for the future, and I think the sooner that can happen, the better. And as far as working with developers, I know, I, I, it takes time, most definitely. I think we all know that, but as they come to me and my district, you know, they kind of, I think, know what to expect as far as what's important to my constituents is important to me, and from a residential perspective, you know, it all has to make sense and help elevate existing property values and not take away. And if there's a way that we can define some of that and be more specific so that, you know, we can streamline the process, I think that would be great. Some of the projects, a couple of the projects on the agenda tonight are a perfect example, and all of the projects I've worked on in the last three years. They start here, and then based on discussions that we've had in meetings after meetings after meetings, they end up here. And that's wonderful, but if there's a way we can kind of, you know, streamline that, then definitely that's the direction we want to go, and I, I, I see that in all of this. Sooner than later is what I'm getting at. Thank you.
Councilman Binsbacher, and members of the council, we've come a long way. Our 1998 manual, we used to, we used to score buildings, so a, a building would get a certain score in different areas, and then if it, if that score was a passing score, it would be approved. But a lot of times what we found out is you can't quantify good design, right? Because you might have a, a good score, but it may not turn out to be a great building. So we've created a lot of flexibility, and then perhaps moving forward, maybe we need to reduce some of that flexibility in some of these categories.
Mm-hmm. And one other question, Mayor. So will any of this process be public, a public process? Will we go back to that at all, or is this something we're, that staff's putting together and then presenting to council? And I ask because obviously the general plan process was very public, and we took unbelievable steps to, to draw citizens into that process, and I think eventually electronically made huge strides, but still, you know, it was so important for people to participate, and it was really hard to get that across and get the participation that we wanted. So will we go public again, and will that, will we, having to redo some of what we did before with regard to the general plan?
Councilman Binsbacher, members of the council, that's a great question. I think all of this is a public process. In fact, anytime you make changes to the general plan, to this scale or the zoning code, they require public meetings and a public process, so absolutely...
So we'll have to, okay.
And, and, and we're going to want to get input from, from you all, you know, early on, and we're going to want to get input from our design review board, and, and all those are part of a public process.
Great. That's exciting. Thank you.
Thanks. It is really exciting, and I'm, I am very, very pleased to see this come forward. It's, it's really the, the magic, the great thing about local government is that we can hear what our residents want, we can see changes in our society, changes in what people want in, in our town and suburbs, and we can make those changes. We can adjust, and we can say we're going to deliver on what you want your city to be like.
We can recalibrate right now.
We can recalibrate. That's exactly right. That's exactly right. So thanks for, for doing this. Thanks for all of your work on this, and I appreciate the work of, of your staff and, and everybody to, to recalibrate and to get all of this done in time for the public process that, and the ballot process that is the, the general plan.
Great, thank you.
It's a lot. Anything else, Mr. Tyne?
Thank you. That's all we have for this moment. Thank you very much.
All right. Seeing no further business, we are adjourned until our 7:00 PM meeting.